They are Cindy's give me the thumbs up. All right. Thank you. Okay, so let's call to order the committee of the whole meeting for February 11th, 2021. I'm going to ask for an adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Charlotte, second by Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the minutes of December 10th, 2020. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Brooks Hill, second by Counselor Ryan, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Any business arising from those minutes of December 10th? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to number nine A staff reports, planning short term rentals. And we have a presentation. Ms. Wade, Mr. Simon?
Yes, thank you. Your worship. We're just getting set up.
Okay.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are very excited to be for for today to introduce and have discussion on the short term rental and the proposed amendments we're considering to bring before council. So for the agenda for today, we're going to talk about the summary of the issues, give you a little background, and then we'll have a discussion about the proposed amendments and talk about our next steps. I just wanted to say that the purpose of proposing these regulations is to seek feedback in regards to what staff is proposing from council and also to discuss the next levels of engagements for undertaking the amending bylaws. We'd like to have some input and discussion about that as well. As you're aware, over the last year, we have brought forward a number of reports and updates to council and committee of the whole. And we wanted to just quickly touch upon the fact that there was some council resolutions done in 2016. And basically, this was to take a halt and take a look at how do we comprehensively address single family dwellings in regards to short term rental? We believe what we've come, what is coming before you today is a way of dealing with the single family and two family dwellings in a comprehensive manner, both in residential as well as commercial zones. Over the last, we started this in December 2019. We came forward with some best practices, seeking guidance on guiding principles. And we have engaged with the community, committee of the whole over the last year, bringing updates, getting direction so that we're finally before you today with a clear path to move forward in regards to this issue. And we're looking forward to having this discussion today. I just wanted to quickly remind you of the guiding principles and what we have found during our engagement over the last year is that the guiding principles pretty are the four main cores that we are proposing to address and find resolution to in order to move the short term rentals forward in single family dwellings, discussing how we use secondary suites and how we define these and regulate them both in residential zones as well as commercial zones. And from here, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Simon because we are both been working on this. And Mr. Simon is now going to walk you through our proposed new definitions to help us to support the regulations for short term rental.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. So the way that we wanted to present this to the committee today is we will go through the new definitions, which will be followed by the regulations that we have crafted to ultimately guide the development of short term rentals. And if it's okay with the chair, once we get into the regulations, we would like to present them two at a time and then have any questions from the from the committee, from council to to help address them as we're going through them because it is a little bit to unpack and we want to make sure that everyone is is clear as we are going through each regulation.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so to start us off, some of the new definitions that we're proposing will be quite key to actually implement and embed these new regulations into the zoning by law. So the first two that we're looking at is short term rental and permanent resident. Short term rental, pretty broad, pretty basic use of a dwelling unit to provide temporary accommodation to the traveling public. You will see on the next slide that the use or that the term temporary is defined being less than 30 days. Permanent resident again is is key to define to actually implement the new regulations. And once we delve into those regulations, you will see why the permanent resident definition is required. So the other three that we're proposing to include is residential use, commercial use, as well as temporary. Temporary, we've already touched upon on the last slide. And we really won't needed to differentiate between residential use and commercial use. You will see again, as we start delving into the regulations, why these definitions are so key to actually implement the intent of the regulations to govern short term rentals in the zoning by law. So now we're going to start off with the first two regulations. These will be amended into the zoning by law as supplementary regulations currently contained in section five of the zoning by law. So the first two that we're going to touch upon right now is the fact that we're proposing that they are only going to be permitted in single family and two family dwellings. The main intent of this is to ensure that any multi-family residential building currently is maintained for permanent resident occupation so that we aren't losing those those key multi-family developments in the city to our rental pool right now so that they're they're not being used for short term rental operations. The other one is that they are only going to be permitted when they're operated by a permanent resident. So the key here is that if it's a single family dwelling, you need to have a single family dwelling typically with a suite. There would need to be a permanent resident who is operating the short term rental out of either the single family dwelling or the secondary suite. And that could be a renter or it could be an owner. If it's a two family dwelling, so a duplex, you would be allowed to reside in half of that duplex and be an operator for a short term rental that would be occurring out of the other half. And the main key with requiring that operator who's a permanent resident to reside on site. Again, it maintains at least half of these units in our rental pool for our permanent residence. So really is geared at protecting the interests of the permanent residents of Revelstoke. And it also does promote that good neighbor mentality and that stewardship for the operator who is also a member of the neighborhood then to to ensure that they have good short term rental tenants. So if there's any questions from the committee, we can unpack them now about these two regulations. And if those questions are are answered with subsequent regulations, we will let you know.
You're muted, Gary.
Thank you for that. I thought with my microphone down, I was unmuted. Just before we get into questions, Counselor Brooks Hill, can you see the presentation now?
No, I can't.
Okay, can somebody help Counselor Brooks Hill with that? If you look down in the bottom, will you see the presentation in one of the one of the slides as you look along where everybody is on the bottom? And if so, you click on that, you should be able to get it up and see that. And while you're doing that, Counselor Ryan and Counselor Charlotte each have a question. Counselor Ryan, if you'd go first, please.
Yeah, so that would mean that apartment buildings and anything more than a duplex are not allowed to do this, right?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. We are looking at presenting these originally. As staff do delve into the zoning by law comprehensive review, we would be evaluating whether or not a multi-family component to have short term rentals is appropriate. But for the time being, we're only proposing them in single family and two family dwelling. And again, the key is to ensure that those multi-family units are preserved in our rental pool for permanent occupants. And it should be noted as well that any of the CD zones, which currently do permit the higher density development forms that already have vacation rentals embedded, these regulations are not altering those development rights in any way.
Right. And what about detached units like carriage suites? Like if a resident lived there in their carriage suite above their garage or something, would that be considered a separate suite on the same lot?
Through your worship, so we currently don't allow carriage suites. But as we are working and we do have regulations that we're in the midst of drafting right drafting right now, this is one of the items that we would again be coming back to council to get feedback on. And it would ultimately result in subsequent amendments to these regulations. Once we do permit detached secondary dwelling units on a lot to see whether or not it's preferred by the community to allow them to use a short term rental.
Right, so as written right now, because we don't allow carriage suites, it's not allowed. But if we did, the current way that's written would have to be amended?
Through the chair, that is correct. Whether or not we permit them or we don't permit them, we would suggest for clarity that these regulations be amended to spell out whether or not they are permitted. And you know, it would be a question for consideration of council and the community. Should detached secondary dwelling units be preserved for that permanent rental pool? Or do we want to allow them as short term rentals? So that's a that's a future conversation that we would have that would ultimately result in amendments to these regulations regardless of which way we went.
Okay, and I just have one last question, if that's all right.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So if you own a house anywhere, this is saying that you can vacation rent a room so long as you're actually home when the guest is visiting. Is that right? Or is that what the next rule is trying to avoid?
Through your worship, so essentially, these regulations are for the residential areas. If you are going to operate a short term rental unit, you need to have a permanent resident who is that operator who lives on site. If they're going to live in one of the rooms and rent out the rest of the rooms in the house, that's okay. But typically for short term rentals, someone's looking at getting a full dwelling unit to themselves, right?
Yeah.
But with these regulations, you would have someone that's living in one of the dwelling units on site for half of a duplex and then renting out the remainder.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious because I know that in some places and probably here, there will be a few residents that will say, you know, like maybe they're an older couple and they don't want to have somebody full time live in their spare room, but they would rent it out occasionally and, you know, make feed them breakfast or whatever as an example. And I'm just, I'm saying, I guess what I'm curious to know is would that be allowed under these rules? Because when I read these regulations, I wasn't sure if it was necessary that there be a separation of units between the people residing in the home and the actual unit that's being rented.
Through the chair, the intent is that there's a separation of units. What you're describing is really more reflective of a bed and breakfast where someone is renting out rooms within a dwelling that they are currently residing in.
So it wouldn't be allowed to vacation rent in a house that you live in and rent out just a room in your home?
Through your worship, no, not as a short term rental. It would be a bed and breakfast use at that point or a hostel use at that point. Yeah, or or just a standard roommate, right? But the idea that what they would be doing then falls under a different use classification, either being a hostel or a bed and breakfast. And that that was the key with these definitions. And you'll see subsequently that bed and breakfast and short term rental can't occur on a lot simultaneously. And that was intentional, right? If someone wants to just rent out rooms in their house, they really are going to fall in that bed and breakfast category.
Okay, and that makes sense because I guess it'd be really hard to 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 enforce that the resident on site was there because maybe they live there, but then they like leave for the weekend and then, yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
All right, Counselor Charlotte.
Great, thanks. I'm just curious, when you were talking about the duplex, I appreciate these definitions. It really does help clarify the conversation. When you're talking about duplexes and secondary suites, I'm wondering if the what how that fits in? If you had a duplex with secondary suites, is that technically a multi-family home then? Because that's four dwelling units?
Through your worship, so currently, while there are changes in the B C building code that allow for that, the zoning by law does not currently permit that. And again, as we are moving forward with zoning by law amendments, that's another item that we would have to tackle as part of the short term rental regulations. So again, these are, these are a starting point. And as we have new development forms, new dwelling types that are going to come into the play in the near future, we hope, then these regulations would be amended to reflect those uses and how they can occur.
Right. I'm glad you guys are the ones keeping track of all this.
So Mr. Simon, just a question. Somebody has a house that they're not living in, they're managing it as a short term rental, they have four or five rooms, no intention of living on site. Are they still going to be able to operate that if no one's there? Or is that have to be switched over to a different venue or commercial units or what? Or is, can you answer that question at this point?
To your worship, so again, just focusing on the residential areas right now, the operator needs to reside on site. So whether that be a renter or an owner, they need to reside on site in one of the dwelling units on site. If the question is geared towards the existing spot zones that allow it or in commercial areas, it will be a little bit different and we'll we'll get to that with the subsequent regulations. But on the surface, if we're not accounting for a commercial or the spot zone properties, no, that would not be permitted in the residential areas. You need to have someone, whether it be a renter or an owner, they need to reside on site. And that's the key with these regulations here.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, counselors?
Yeah, I have one. Yeah, so in under the rationale for that second point, it says survey results supported owner occupied in residential areas. Is the residential area like, how is that defined? Like, is that by zoning?
Yep.
Yeah.
Through the chair, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's it.
All right, carry on, Mr. Simon. Thank you.
So the next two regulations, the first one is outlining that they're only permitted where there's a residential use that's undertaken by a permanent resident is occurring within a dwelling unit on site. So again, this is really, really key to implement those operator requirements. And it relates back to the definitions that we had gone through earlier. And this is how you ensure that for either one of the units within a single family dwelling, being a secondary suite or the remainder of the dwelling or one of the units of the two family dwellings is used for general residential occupancy by a permanent resident. And this will immensely help staff with enforcing these regulations. And it will eliminate the semantics that come along with, well, what constitutes someone who actually lives on site? What constitutes someone who's undertaking a residential use? So this really does clarify it and it will also help with enforcement purposes. The next one is short term rentals not exceeding one per lot. You know, this is again, pretty self explanatory. We want to make sure that if you have secondary suite and a single family dwelling on one lot, you're not going to be using both of them as a short term rental. So again, it just meshes with the previous regulations. If there's any questions about these two, we can go through them now.
Counselors, any questions? Seeing none at this point, let's carry on, Mr. Simon.
So the next two regulations, again, I think are pretty self explanatory within our residential areas. We have lots of uses that we would not want to have a short term rental occurring simultaneously with these uses. So general care centers, boarding rooms, bed and breakfast or group homes. And then the most common one here that we would see would be bed and breakfast. And it's very key that we would not permit short term rentals where there is a bed and breakfast use occurring because there would be some some conflicts with actually implementing each of those respective uses. The next one is having a maximum of four sleeping units within any dwelling unit and a maximum occupancy of eight people. Now, these are, these are the regulations that were previously in place or well, currently in place for vacation rentals. So these have not been altered with the proposed amendments.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, so the the care center and the boarding rooms and all that, are these, so these are specific zonings?
So through your worship, these are uses that are contained within all of our standard residential zones. The idea is that within a residential zone, what is the intent of that property under that zoning? It is to provide for residential accommodation with secondary uses that can be undertaken. By not allowing multiple secondary uses to be undertaken, you're preserving that residential character, which is in line with the intent of the zone.
But could they not just change the use completely and be like, we're not doing a boarding house anymore? We're not doing a care center and just go to.
Through your worship, that is correct. The key is that this only allows one of them to be occurring at a time. So someone can't be doing a short term rental in one unit and then a bed and breakfast in another unit. Because at that point, you know, staff in in planning, and again, you start to get a little bit into interpretation here. But the question becomes, how many of these uses can be stacked on top of each other on one property before you're making it a commercial property in a residential area? And this is intended to help restrict that from occurring.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, counselors? Carry on, Mr. Simon, please.
The next two, these ones are very key for enforcement. So again, not changing, altering, detracting from the residential character. This is, this is pretty typical, especially within the residential areas and even within the commercial areas that we have dwellings. We want to make sure that the character of those dwellings are preserved. And then the next one is not producing a nuisance for surrounding properties, noise, light pollution, traffic. Again, this is pretty key from an enforcement perspective to have these enabling regulations to ensure that the uses are undertaken in a respectful and responsible manner. If there's no questions about those, then we can go on to the last two, which again, they're consistent with the current regulations. So no signage being permitted for vacation rentals and also providing parking in accordance with the provisions of section 12 of the zoning by law, which requires one parking stall per licensed bedroom. And then the last two regulations that we can go through here are a little bit more to unpack. So we can go through them one at a time. The the second last one here, what it is essentially saying is four dwellings and two family dwellings within commercial zones, specifically the C1, C2, and C6. So that's our main downtown, our fringe downtown area, as well as the Victoria Road commercial area. You are permitted to undertake a short term rental use within those dwelling units without having a permanent resident be an operator on site. You need a permanent resident to be an operator to provide 24/7 property management services, but they do not need to reside on site. So that is, this is one of the key ways that we would differentiate the short term rental use within a commercial area compared to the residential areas. And the way that it has to be written here to actually implement the regulations is a notwithstanding clause relating back to parts two and three of the regulations that we went through at the beginning. And just as a reminder, we have them here. It relates to generally speaking, a permanent resident living on site as the operator carrying on a residential use within their respective dwelling unit. Those two regulations do not apply for the commercially zoned properties being C1, C2, and C6. So again, all this means in practice is they still need someone who's a permanent resident of the city to provide 24/7 property management services. That operator just doesn't need to live on site. And so you can't have someone who's living in Salmonarm, you know, managing the property. You need to have someone who's living in Revelstoke managing the property in these commercial areas.
Counselor Ryan, do you have a question?
I do. So sorry, I have one about point 10, which was about parking. So basically, if somebody wants to vacation rent, say their basement suite, they would submit an application to get their business license. And with that application, there'd be like a parking plan. And then the city would or the planning department would approve that plan, right?
Yes, that would be through a business license application.
Okay, cool. And then for point 11, in the rationale, it says any zone that allows for caretaker's residence is not permitted to have a short term renter rental. What what is that?
So just through your worship, just to give some background on that, the C1, C2, C6 zones are the only ones that have the use dwelling or two family dwelling listed in. We have a multitude of other commercial and industrial zones that have a use called caretaker residence. The intent of those of that use specifically is if you have a commercial or an industrial activity that's occurring on the property and you want to have one person who is managing that use reside on site, they would be able to do so. It's very common to have someone residing in a modular home, for instance. Or let's say there's an old single family dwelling on a site like in Big Eddie where, you know, it's being converted to an industrial use, but they have this old dwelling on site. Well, they can have someone who's a quote unquote caretaker. It's it's a little bit of antiquated terminology, but you can have them reside on site. Now, the reason why you can't use those as a short term rental is because it would defeat the purpose of that caretaker residence being for someone who's an employee of the business to reside on site managing that business.
I don't really understand that, though. Like, wouldn't that be up to the the people who own it?
It has to do with the use. So when we look at the use caretaker residence, it's a different use than dwelling, single detached or two family dwelling. And the intent of that use is different. The intent of a caretaker residence is to provide accommodation for an employee of a business. So a very common example is someone who is like a night watchman. He residing on site to oversee a warehouse, right?
Right.
That's that's a very common example. So if you're using it as a short term rental, that completely differentiates the use of what a caretaker's residence intent is.
So the point of this is basically just saying like, you can't use the caretaker residence as a way to like skirt around this because it's like explicitly not for like people who are residing on the property.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks.
So Mr. Simon, just a question for clarity. There are some residents in the community that are renting out three or four rooms and the owner's not in the community. It's not in a commercial zone or rural than anything. And so the new proposed by law wouldn't allow that unless someone was living on site to manage. Am I correct with that?
To your worship, just to provide clarity, the use that you're referring to is general boarding and lodging, which is different than short term rental. The key here is if someone wants to rent out rooms within their house for a period of less than 30 days, so not that long term accommodation you're referring to, then these are the short term rental regulations that would guide them. If someone is providing boarding and lodging for long term residence, being 30, 30 consecutive days or more, then they're permitted to do that without having a quote unquote operator on site because they're just long term tenants.
So anything under 30 days then does require a manager or an operator on site?
To your worship, yes, that would be correct if they are looking at coming in under the short term rental use. And if someone came in and said, I want to rent out three bedrooms in my house for a week at a time or a day at a time, the response from planning staff would be the use that you fall under as a short term rental use based on these definitions.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
And then 30 days for an R1 with a short term rental clause. Why the distinction?
Through your worship, so what Counselor Elliott is referring to is actually the next regulation. And if if there's no questions further about the the commercially zoned properties, then I'm more than happy to elaborate and and go into depth on that. I just, it is a lot to unpack with these regulations. So I just want to make sure that we're not jumping ahead to the next ones before we've fully satisfied council for each.
All right, carry on, Mr. Simon. Thank you.
Who, again, what Counselor Elliott was referring to is the the question that a lot of residents and staff have grappled with for some time. How are we going to deal with all these properties that were spot zoned previously? So we have all the quote unquote RV properties. There's, I think, upwards of 30 or 40 of them that we have within the city that went through the rezoning process previously. We have some that are in the queue. So the question is, how do we deal with these? As opposed to, we can't require them to come in alignment with these new regulations. Under the Local Government Act, there are provisions that protect the use of these properties as lawful and nonconforming. So how do we embed that as part of the regulations? That's what we've sought to do here so that this never gets lost in interpretation from staff over the years that we are maintaining their development rights. So any of these properties that hold that RV zoning, they can still be used as a short term rental like they are. They do not have the requirement, because they currently don't have this requirement, to have an operator residing on site. So they are refrained from using this term, but they are almost grandfathered in with these regulations to not have that operator on site requirement like any new short term rental would. And why you're seeing 120 days maximum per calendar year, which is separate from the 30 day temporary stay, that would still be applicable. That still constitutes a temporary stay. That maximum of 120 days per year is currently embedded in the vacation rental definition. So we didn't want to lose that. The whole goal here, and again, it comes down to, under the provincial legislation, how do lawful, nonconforming uses, how do they operate and how can they be governed? We wanted to reflect that in the regulation here to embed those lawful, nonconforming rights as part of these development regulations. It's something that, again, we had we had grappled with, but we had landed on this being the most prudent option so that these properties can continue to operate exactly as they have been and without relying on the the provincial legislation for lawful, nonconforming. It's embedded right in the regulations. So it's simple, it's clear, it's there for everyone to see.
So Ryan, do you have a question?
Yeah. Yeah. So two questions. If somebody in this R1B or R2B or whatever zoning had somebody onsite, would they then be able to increase their number of days from 120 to 365?
Through your worship, no. They're operating right now under these regulations. If there was ever a period where they wanted to alter their use, like that is, that's a bit bigger of a discussion that we would have as part of a comprehensive zoning bylaw review to figure out how we want to deal with these spot-zone properties. But in essence, for implementation of the current regulations, this is what would be governing any of those properties that are zoned R1V, R2V. What you're essentially referring to is a process where the owner would have to rezone back from R1V to R1.
Right, because R1 is not considered residential.
Sorry?
Because R1B, or sorry, R1, oh yeah, R1B is not considered residential?
Through your worship, it's still considered a residential property. It was just spot-zone to allow one specific use being vacation rental.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, like, does, do all the rules up to this one include R1V, et cetera, zonings? Like, why would somebody who had an R1V zoning not be able to go backwards and say, okay, well, we're going to put somebody onsite and now we can do it for 360? You know what I mean?
Through your worship, I understand what you're saying, but it has to do with the zoning of their property. Because they hold that R1V zoning, they are, you can think of it, they are locked in to those regulations that preceded these. That was the process that they had went through to get that zoning. That is how they have currently been operating. And we are looking to not change the way that they have been operating. I think what you're referring to is something that staff will have to grapple with when we do a comprehensive zoning bylaw review, which is a lot of work and it requires a lot of engagement with landowners. And, you know, it might take staff working with individual property owners to see what their preference is, right? So that is something to think about later on potentially. But time being, their rights, as they're currently prescribed for in the zoning bylaw, are preserved through this regulation, and they are not altered. The intent is not for them to switch over to other short-term rental regulations. The intent is for them to continue operating as they are.
Okay. Do they need business licenses as well, or no, because they already have everything in place?
Through your worship, yes, they need business licenses. When they come in for renewal of their business license, they might just see it referenced as short-term rental instead of vacation rental.
Right.
But for all intents and purposes, it would be the same for them.
Okay. And then my last question is, the other people who don't have R1V zoning, say the R1 zone house who wants to do this with their basement suite or something, do they have to, or sorry, are they restricted to 120 days or no?
No. Through your worship, they are not.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Counselor. Any other questions of Mr. Simon before he carries on? Counselor Charlotte?
I'm curious about the days where the short-term rental is not occupied. I'm not sure if this is the time for the conversation or if this is part of that more comprehensive look or later. But one thing we see a lot in our community are six-month leases available, where, yes, you can rent this home for the summer and it is reasonably priced, but you have to be out by November because then it turns into a short-term rental. How does that fit in with the regulations? Yeah, how does that fit in?
Through your worship, they would be permitted to do that. I mean, that's their choice. If they wanted to come back and reside in the unit for half the year, if they want to rent it out long-term for half the year, then short-term rental it for the remaining half. The key that we're going to be looking for is that at any point in time when it's being used as a short-term rental, that they are abiding by these regulations. So that means having a, in the residential areas anyway, having a permanent resident operator onsite and that they have a valid business license for it. If they have a valid business license and they are complying with the requirements, but for six months out of the year, they want to rent out half the property to a long-term permanent resident, that is completely their prerogative to do so. The key for us is anytime that short-term rental use is active and occurring, that they are abiding by these regulations and that they got that valid license.
Right, perfect. And your worship, I'm curious as to whether there's any conversation or appetite for discussing the vacant, like the dark windows syndrome, where the house is sitting empty as part of the housing action plan or discussion?
I'm going to ask, so you go to Mr. Simon on that. That's a good question, Counselor. Not sure whether that falls under short-term rentals or not, or ends up just a discussion regarding housing. Mr. Simon, any comment?
Yeah, through your worship, it is a longer, larger discussion about housing within the city. It doesn't specifically relate to the short-term rental use. And Ms. Wade might have some things to add in there. But in terms of the short-term rental regulations, it's not something that is appropriate to regulate within the zoning bylaw through short-term rental. And it's not something opposing as this, but Ms. Wade might have some further comments on that.
Yeah. Yeah, in regards to the dark windows, it's a larger conversation to deal with how, it's a larger, it's a very large conversation, actually, on how you manage that. People do invest in your community, and that's why Vancouver and Kelowna, you know, brought in those extra taxes. So, I mean, it's a larger conversation that we can have around the housing action plan as we move into that and figure out those tools. But they will, there is an impact to all that.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Elliott, you have a question?
Gary, through your worship, I'm just curious, the 30-day requirement for a short-term rental, that's just, a person can't stay longer than 30 days, but if they did stay 29 days, took a day, the house was empty for a couple more, then another 30 days can be engaged in by another tenant. Is that what I understand?
Mr. Simon, an answer to that question?
Through your worship, the 30 days is reflective of 30 consecutive days.
Yeah.
So it needs to be 30 consecutive days. And then the other component of that is if someone wanted to come and stay in a short-term rental for a period of greater than 30 days, it's no longer meeting that short-term rental use because from our definitions, we wouldn't consider that to be temporary. Someone is staying for a longer-term accommodation. You have to put a cutoff point somewhere to provide clarity and direction to the public about what use category they fall within. Anything 30 days or less is that short-term rental use. Anything greater than 30 days becomes that long-term boarding and lodging use. So it's as simple as that, right? If someone wants to stay longer, they can, but we would consider them long-term resident then.
So that, sorry, can I carry on, Gary?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So the R1V-zoned areas, if they had a tenant in there for 30 days, but they can only do it up to, they can only rent that space out for a maximum of 120 days in a year, whereas an R1 with a short-term rental agreement can do it all year round.
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. And again, that 120-day requirement for the RV properties is reflective of the current regulations that they are operating under. So again, the intent with these regulations was to guide new short-term rental uses while simultaneously preserving the development rights that are entrenched for these RV properties.
But it sounds to me like the RV, there's no advantage to go have a zoned RV rather than, you can, it'd be more advantageous if you're going to have a business to run it as a standard R-zoned area and then just go for the short-term license.
Through your worship, the difference predominantly between the RV properties and an R1 property that under these regulations could do a short-term rental is that that R1 property needs a permanent resident who is an operator residing onsite. The RV properties do not require that.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Simon, just as a question as we move forward, will there be the ability for people to apply for an RV zoning?
Through your worship, that is something that staff can never restrict. So we have the zoning that's embedded in the bylaw as part of our comprehensive review. We will be looking at if that zoning has to remain. But for the time being, if someone came in and said, "I want to make an application to go from R1 to R1V", we cannot restrict their ability to do so. However, it should be noted that staff wouldn't be supporting those applications because the whole intent of this new framework is to negate the need for the spot zoning, which is challenging to implement and manage, logistically challenging. So that's the whole intent of these new regulations, right? So again, we can't restrict anyone's ability, but we would make it very clear to them what the intent of these regulations were.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. I thought I'd ask the question now before we get too further along and people know where we're, what we're dealing with here. All right. Any further questions, Counselors, before Mr. Simon carries on? Counselor Elliott?
I know each of these short-term rentals would be licensed, and that would be a revenue source for the city. But what about taxation? What, when is that considered in the extra burden on our infrastructure?
Through your worship, so development services, so first off, taxation is a provincial jurisdiction matter. But secondly, development services would be working with finance as well as engineering to see whether or not any fees that we require in our fees and charges by law for business licenses and servicing would need to be amended as part of these.
So you said the taxing is a provincial issue, like municipal tax? Like, I'm talking, if you've got a home, an R1 home that's got a section allocated to vacation rentals, should you not be, couldn't we not adjust our municipal tax to, you know, compensate for the extra volume going into our sewer plant?
Ms. McCabe, that's how the taxation is done, is set, regulations are set by BC Assessment or by the provincial government? Is that not correct?
That is correct, your worship. Provincial legislation sets out the classes that BC Assessment uses for the purposes of taxation. And then the municipality sets tax rates for each of those classes. And so right now, there is not a class that covers this. Property is either residential or it's business and other. So yeah, so as long as the property remains in, as a residential class, it would continue to get the residential tax rate until such time as the legislation has changed.
So to, do we let, do we create another R-class? Because we've created an RV class. Do we, I mean, it's just a classification that we tax upon and it's...
We, sorry, through your worship, the city doesn't have any ability to create different classes. There's eight, or there's nine classes now, and those classes are established by provincial legislation. They're not established by the city.
Wow. Wow. So there's no way, so if someone chooses to put more of a burden on our system, we have, how do we assess the value? Do we let them know they've got a vacation home, add more to the assessed value?
I don't believe, I don't know how BC Assessment actually would approach that. We'd have to reach out to them and ask them.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Wade's waving her hand, so before I say anything, Ms. Wade, go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship. I don't really want to take us down this rabbit hole, but the way that vacation rentals or short-term are assessed according to BC Assessment is based on the number of days that they're actually in a short-term rental. And how this originally started was in Whistler, there was phase one and phase two covenants. And then they were then assessed by BC Assessment because they were either under 120 days or over 120 days. And 120 days became the cutoff to be more commercial. And hence, where the BC Assessment would be to collect commercial taxes for those uses. So it's all to do with the number of days BC Assessment. And in Whistler, they use covenants to discern that, so when people bought properties, they knew what their obligations were. We do not have that here. Is that something we can talk about moving forward when we deal with more purpose-built tourist accommodation? Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. So Counselor Brooks Hill or Counselor Ryan both have questions?
So Mr. Simon mentioned talking about fees as opposed to taxes that could be charged. Is there some potential to, say, charge higher water and sewer fees on units that have a vacation rental license?
Mr. Simon, Ms. Wade?
Yeah. So I'm going to defer to Ms. McCabe. I believe that once we have a commercial rate, there's a, should be an increase with the water and services. And I just need to refer to Ms. McCabe on whether we have that allowance yet in the water and fees.
Ms. McCabe?
Through your worship, we do not have that right now in our waters or our fee schedule. It would be something that staff could look at for sure. We currently have different charges for different commercial uses, which include short-term accommodations like hotels and motels and campgrounds, but we don't currently have anything for vacation rentals.
So that's something in moving forward that we could work with finance on in regards to how do we amend this? We do have some examples of practices in other municipalities and how they use those fees. So that is something we could definitely look at moving for 2022.
Counselor Brooks Hill, follow-up?
No, just, I think that would be something that would be worth looking at, creating a, you know, more fairness in how our fees are charged.
Great. Thank you for that. Counselor Ryan?
Thanks. So is the requirement for the separate dwelling unit, is that, like, does it have to be a legal suite? Or can it just be like separated because like, this is in my basement and there's a door?
No, it must be a legal suite. It must meet all the building code. It must be licensed. So.
Okay.
However, we work, you either license for a secondary suite, or you could be licensed for a short-term rental.
Okay. And then I've heard through the grapevine that it's a challenging and expensive process to get your legal suite to be, you know, licensed and separate and legal and all those things. And I don't know if that's true or not and like what's involved in that, but do we have any plan to make that more achievable? Or is it, you know, like, why is it the way that it is?
Okay. Through your worship, to Counselor Ryan, I think there's a couple of things there. I'll kind of unpack what you said. And so there's a condition where, say, somebody might have an illegal suite and to bring it legal may cost them money to meet the building code. So that's something that you might, people might feel that, oh, if I have to make my suite legal, then it's going to cost me money. And it could because it may not meet the building code standards, which we must regulate for health and safety.
Right. So I guess, yeah, the response to people saying, well, it's so expensive is like, the city doesn't have any control over that, but they do have the control as to, like, is the reason we're saying it has to be licensed and separate because it's easier to enforce if they don't have a separate suite? And then as a part two to that, does the city get more taxes from, property taxes from units that have two separate legal properties?
So there's, so they would be assessed as a single-family home, and they would have a suite in it, and then BC Assessment would assess it according to their classifications as Ms. McCabe was. And then it would be taxed accordingly. We get our percentage back from the province, right?
Right, but is that typically a little higher?
It would all depend on how it's assessed, but I would say yes, because there would be more assessed value on that suite.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And so just to clarify, Ms. Wade, regulations, BC Building Code regulations and the regulations that we're following for a seat, for a suite that's meeting all those codes is for health and safety?
That's right. That's the building code is set up for health and safety. So when somebody wants to legalize their suite, they must meet the building code. And there's, they can do alternative solutions as long as an architect or an engineer signs off on that. But that's what our goal is, so that we have the health and safety covered off.
But it's also, if I'm understanding correctly, kind of good because then it's also, like, BC Assessment has that and it's all documented. So in theory, the city should be getting more taxed.
Well, the assessment's going to be higher.
The assessment will be higher, yes. So this helps us with taxation, correct?
Okay. And then the, and then on the other sort of side of that coin would be if somebody's not willing to bring their legal, or sorry, their illegal suite up to code to meet health and safety requirements, then in theory, they would just use it for long-term rentals, which is great for us.
Well, technically, they need to have a license to be operated, so it would be an enforcement issue.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, like, one of our objectives in this whole process is to maintain long-term rental units and that would do that, you know, it's almost like that one barrier, that additional barrier is, yeah, you have to bring it to code and some people might not be willing to do that. But that kind of works out for the city because then it's like, well, you get to keep more rental units.
Through your worship, they'd be able to use it for boarding and lodging. They wouldn't be able to use it as a legal secondary suite.
That's right, because it's not legal.
Yeah, no, I know, but that's that's good. Like boarding and lodging is is good.
Yeah, I could use it in that thing.
Right, cool, thanks.
Okay, any further questions before Mr. Simon carries on? Okay, saying none, Mr. Simon?
Okay, so just wrapping it up. So there are some minor tweaks and changes throughout as well that we'll have to make to the bylaw. Use vacation rental, again, within our standard definitions will be removed and the the use short-term rental will be inserted. Again, we already touched upon this earlier, but keep in mind all the comprehensive development zones, and we have a few of them right now where vacation rentals are permitted. Those will not be altered and those C D zones, they have the uses defined and embedded within each C D zone. So removing vacation rental will not alter them in any way, and we will add in the use and the definition, short-term rental. So the regulations again for parking will be maintained, one stall per licensed bedroom. You'll just see a slight tweak in those regulations that that reference vacation rental or short-term rental, again, to cover those C D zones. Members to the business license by law will be required to add short-term rental as use and require operator contact information. Now, should council support these bylaw amendments, one of the big questions that we'll have to have is going about enforcement, of course. So staff will be proposing, you know, at least a three-month grace period from the date of bylaw adoption to allow current short-term rental operators to come into compliance with the new rules. Afterward, enforcement action against short-term rental operators that don't have a valid business license will be undertaken. And keep in mind that business license process is the process by which our planning, building and fire group go out to make sure that suites even even dwellings themselves have appropriate provisions in accordance with B C building code and fire code measures. So to kind of wrap us up and go full circle here, we wanted to outline how the proposed regulations in our view align back with the guiding principles. So staff's staff's view of this and staff's preparing amendments to this effect really did look at previous direction as well as previous feedback from the community and different stakeholders. We really do feel that these are regulations that are geared towards protecting the interests of permanent residents within Revelstoke. You know, by requiring the operator to live on site in the residential areas, it results in half of all the units. So one of the two units for a two-family dwelling or one of the two units for a single-family dwelling site that has a suite being used and maintained for a permanent resident occupation, whether that be a renter or an owner. It encourages self-monitoring and a good neighbor approach by that permanent resident operator being also a member of that neighborhood. That is very key and critical for Revelstoke. Given the fact that, you know, we might not have the enforcement resources to implement a very logistically challenging and complicated complicated enforcement program. This really does promote that good neighbor and good stewardship approach. It does allow more flexible rental options. So again, we wanted to make sure that we weren't stagnating the tourist accommodation market as well. So for the dwellings in the commercial areas, that they can be used as a primary use for short-term rental. And the consistent rules do provide a fair playing field for all operators while maintaining the rights of those who hold the RV zoning. So to kind of wrap up now and go on to what the next steps from this are, staff are seeking feedback from council regarding what direction they would like us to go with respect to engagement with the community and bringing these forward. So the first option would be preparing bylaws. We do have a frequently asked question sheet that's quite extensive, that's prepared. We wanted to make sure that these amendments were in line with council direction before releasing anything to the public and we can tweak it as needed. And we would be posting on our online platform and then we would proceed to bring forward for council consideration, targeting in March 2021. So the only cost associated with this would be scheduling of subsequent public hearing after initial council consideration. The next option would be a little bit more extensive, preparing informational videos, posting F A Q online again, allowing 30 days for comments and then proceed to bring the bylaws forward for council consideration. We'd be thinking probably somewhere in April or May, you know, a little bit of an additional cost to prepare those informational videos and to analyze some of the data that comes back. And then option three would be most extensive, holding a public information meeting at the community center, posting the F A Q online and then proceeding to bring the amending bylaws forward. We would probably be looking closer to a May or June 2021 date with, you know, a cost around $8,000 based on what it takes to have safe in-person engagement during COVID, which is, you know, currently not particularly supported by provincial guidelines. So we touched upon it earlier as well. Development Services staff will continue to work with finance and corporate services regarding any impacts that this would have to other bylaws, business licenses, fees and charges, ticketing systems, and we would also look to those those water and sewer rates that we alluded to previously. So thank you. This concludes our presentation and we will, we can leave this slide on because this is kind of the direction that staff are seeking in order to bring forth the amending bylaws.
Here, I have a question. All right. Okay, anybody?
Your worship, you're muted, your worship.
Sorry, I'm yapping away and I'm hearing everybody else speak. So my comment was, while I was still muted, option one, two or three, but I'm going to go to Counselor Brooks Hill and Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, sorry, I I have a question not related to the one, two and three, but to go back to the C Ds zones, the comprehensive development zones, I'm a little I I'm a little unclear. So are they not going to be bound by this framework at all or will they be bound by this framework?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, they still require business licenses, but the regulations to guide them will not be the regulations that we're proposing. How they are currently operating under the provisions of their specific C D zone is what will guide their development. C D zones are, and I know we've gone through this previously, they are intended to be a snapshot in time for that specific development to guide that specific vision. And you have to be very careful when you're bringing forth amending bylaws not to impact the development abilities of those C D zones as they would relate to more broad zones like our R one, R two zones.
Okay, so the only thing that would change is that they will require a business license?
Through your worship, they currently do require business licenses for the use. That's standard. But in terms of the regulations that they are governed by for vacation rentals, short-term rentals, they these regulations would not apply to them. And that's that's very important because when the C D zone is adopted by council, it gives that owner certainty as to how development on those lands will unfold.
Okay.
Great, Counselor Ryan?
Yes, I have a question too that's also not related to the options, though I do have comments about that too. And so under the short-term rental section 12 of the zoning bylaw, there is something that says like that it's one parking spot per licensed bedroom. And I was wondering if this is in addition to the parking that would be required for other non-rented rooms, like if you know, there's like a three-bedroom house and they're only renting two downstairs in the legal suite. Then does the planning department only require that there's two spots or would it require that there's three?
Through through your worship, this is something that we did address in the in the F A Q that we have prepared that, you know, pending council direction, we will make available. So to give you an example, a secondary suite requires one parking stall. If someone is renting out two bedrooms within that secondary suite, then they would require two parking stalls for the short-term rental use. They would not require two parking stalls for the short-term rental use plus one for the secondary suite use. What staff are concerned about is the use that's occurring on site. If the use that's occurring on site is a short-term rental, then it is one per licensed bedroom. If the use that's occurring on site is a secondary suite, then it would be one for the secondary suite.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, but I I think like I'm curious to hear what other counselors think, but I just if we're going to require that somebody be on site and say that they're upstairs, you know, you can't just assume that they don't have a vehicle and then all of a sudden there's like a three-bedroom home and only required to show two parking spots. It seems like that would cause an issue.
Through your worship. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Simon. No, I'll let you weigh in.
Just to clarify, the parking requirements for the remainder of the house or the or the secondary suite itself, wherever the short-term rental use isn't occurring, still remain valid.
So they would be required in in my fake example of a three-bedroom home to show that they have three parking spaces?
Through your worship, that is correct. What I was referring to is say someone is living in the secondary suite and they're renting out three bedrooms in their house above. They would require three stalls for that house. I was referring to they would not require three stalls for the short-term rental use plus two for the dwelling use as well.
Okay, now I'm confused again.
So in all honesty, those who are in the house, if there's three bedrooms or if it's if it's a single-family house, they just need one one spot for themselves plus whatever is legislated for the short-term rentals. Is that correct?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so it's basically saying you have to have one for every bedroom you're renting plus one extra spot that just covers anybody else that's living in that other suite.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. So the example you're providing, someone's renting out as a short-term rental, the dwelling, and they're living in the suite. The suite requires one parking stall. The dwelling that's being used as a short-term rental requires one stall per licensed bedroom.
Okay, so even if there was like this, just to help me with this example, like 10 bedrooms upstairs and then two being rented out in a vacation rental, there would only be three required total.
That is correct, including the secondary suite.
Right, okay, thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. I was worried that maybe they weren't that there was no requirement for there to be a stall for the actual person who would be upstairs or whatever. So that's good. I have another question about the commercial use definition. It says, "Commercial use means the use of a building, lot or portion thereof for business, employment or enterprise that is carried on for gain and or monetary profit by any person." Like, is it possible that anybody would argue that they don't do it for profit and they're just like, I'm doing this for break even? I'm just wondering if we should change that word or if there's no chance that it would be misinterpreted?
Through your worship, staff don't see any any misinterpretation that could come along with that proposed definition.
Okay, cool. And then my last question, probably not actually, my last question is amendments to, so under amendments to bylaw license number 1503, there's a it says, "The owner should provide a contact number for a permanent resident who is responsible for operating the accommodation. This person shall be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to address any nuisance concerns that may result." But how how is that? Is that like, so that's only required in commercial zones?
Through your worship, no, that would be required in both residential and commercial zones. And again, it's so that the city can help with enforcement matters.
Okay, and then if I could ask one more, I just have to read my notes, but it's a oh, yeah, so about the three-month grace period, I was wondering what your more opinion is on like the increased workload to development services because I imagine there's going to be a lot of people in that three-month window submitting applications and wanting to get like suites up to code and all that kind of stuff. Do you think that three months is enough and is the capacity right now at City Hall able to handle it?
Through your worship, essentially, the situation we would be in is we'd be looking for an application to be submitted within that three-month window. If someone submits within that three-month window and staff are actively working with them to meet the regulations and to have the license issued, then we would be making sure that we're communicating with enforcement that that is the current status.
Awesome. So yeah, as long as they apply in that three-month window, they they're good.
Through your worship, that is correct. That is the intent of that grace period.
Okay, cool. And I will stop asking questions so other people can, but I have more.
Counselor Charlotte and then back to Counselor Brooks Hill.
Great, thank you. I'm look was going to ask a question about the options on the screen at the moment for the various different communication timelines. And it looks like one of the big variables there is the timeline. So I'm assuming that that three-month grace period would start shortly after council consideration? Or do we have an idea of which timeline would get that grace period into the spring versus the summer, for example?
Through your worship, the the three-month grace period would be from the date of bylaw adoption. So as you're aware, once it comes for first and second, we still need public hearing, third reading and final adoption. It wouldn't be until that bylaw is fully adopted that that grace period would begin.
Okay. So then, and I'm assuming the online platform that is being referred to in these options is the Bang the Table system?
Through your worship, that is correct.
Wonderful. I'm wondering about I guess my comment is trying to decide between these and I would I'm curious to hear from my fellow counselors. I like the idea of rolling the conversation on Bang the Table into what a public hearing would look like rather than having them as two separate engagements. I'm concerned in option two, for example, and option three, where there's a subsequent public hearing as well as that online engagement rather than making it all part of one engagement period?
Through your worship, just one thing to clarify with the online platform. It can be strictly used to inform as well. It does not necessarily need to be used to gather feedback. The intent of staff really would be more on that informed scale, especially with option one to say, we will be holding a public hearing and we are posting these to inform you of what the proposed regulations are so that the community will be prepared to come to the public hearing and voice their support or opposition for the amendments rather than staff seeking more feedback with that option one.
And we did go to the public.
Yeah, and previous public engagement has been undertaken for these.
Okay.
Counselor Brooks Hill?
I just wanted to express my support for option number one. I I feel like it's time to move this forward.
Counselor Ryan, do you have further input?
Yeah, I also agree. I think option one, I think a lot of people have been engaging with the previous survey and following along and it has been a long I'm happy to move forward with option one personally. The one thing I would request is that in order to get proper feedback, like, I'm sure this was going to be part of the plan once everything's adopted, but I think so that people are understanding what the proposed solution or whatever you want to call it is, that there's like a flow chart that's really, really, really clear. And hopefully we can get that done for under $2,000 that just says like, I have a house. Yes, the zoning is this, then go to this one. And then it's like, I have a legal suite. Is it a legal suite? And then like click here for more information on like what a legal suite is, you know, like, it's just very, very simple because even like, though we've been reading all these documents and like pretty engaged with the proposal, it's like still confusing sometimes. So as simple as we can make it, then I think we'll get much more helpful feedback.
Through your worship, yes, staff would be looking at the best tools to communicate in a very simplified manner, the process by which people can go through to abide by the new regulations.
Thank you.
So there will be something like that for them to see?
Through your worship, yes, we would be able to put something like that together.
Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Elliott? You're muted.
If we do have a public hearing, it's want to assure the public that they can have a chance to influence the bylaws that we enact. And that's that's my my, we're not putting this down as this is the ultimate way we're going to go. If we hear something that's constructive, we'll listen to it. That's what the public hearing is meant to provide. Is that right?
Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, yes, the public hearing is the opportunity to hear back from the public. And if council so deems it necessary to direct staff to go back and do more work or amend the bylaws, we would follow that direction of council.
And I think that's important to believe that the public believe that we're we're reactive to what they what they say. So that that's the key element. The other thing I would like to touch on is that what's the current fee for a short-term rental, the license fee?
Through your worship, I believe it's $50 for business license fee, but I would defer to Ms. McCabe if she has any feedback. I'd have to double-check the fees and charges by law.
So just if that's the case, I would suggest that we need to seriously look at how we're getting money back for the the cost of a short-term rental on our how we're getting money back for the cost of a short-term rental on our, you know, like, a residential unit is designed, you know, DCCs for that unit are $14,000, $15,000. Someone comes in and retrofits an old house, and they've got more people living in that house than a single-family home, and they're only paying $50 a year. So I think that seriously needs to be addressed.
Yep. Through your worship, that would be addressed as part of fees and charges by law changes. And staff do an annual review of fees and charges by law.
Yeah, so if we're thinking about licensing fee for a short-term, we should be thinking maybe significantly more. If we can't tax them legitimately, we should find a way to put some money back into our infrastructure.
Well, that discussion's open to council regarding what you think is fair as far as fees and charges by law. Right now, we've got the fees and charges by law set the same as last year, so this is a new option coming forward. We'll have that discussion on that, both with Ms. McCabe in the Finest Department, and what would be suitable and appropriate with these sorts of fees in consideration of what other communities are doing, and Mr. Simon should be able to give us that information.
Yeah, and I think if we're gonna have a public forum on short-term rentals, we should know a full extent of what the costs are and what we should be charged, what the city will be charging for.
Okay, duly noted. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Ms. McCabe, were you gonna say something, or no?
Um, no, I was just prepared.
Okay, all right. So we have three options in front of us. Option one, doing it in the shorter term. Option two, extending it, doing a little bit of feedback from the community. And option three, doing a more longer period of time feedback from the community. Then with all three, there's still gonna be a public hearing, and then we'll be able to weigh in as to what the community said and what staff feels is suitable for this. Is that not correct, Mr. Simon?
Through your worship, that is correct.
All right. So Counselor Ryan and Counselor Brooks Hill have stated, option number one seems to be appropriate for them. Counselor Charlette, Counselor Elliott, any comments on that?
One is good for me.
Okay, Counselor Charlette?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should just move along with this. We've had a lot of engagement already, which I think is fantastic. It just brought us to the point we're in. I think the more robust that FAQ can be on the online platform to help everyone make some good comments at the public hearing and be well-informed, I think that's gonna serve us well.
All right, perfect. I appreciate that from all of you. So do we need a motion for that, for staff to move forward, Ms. Lo?
Committee of the Hall could put forward a resolution to be heard by council at the next meeting, for sure.
Okay, Counselor Ryan's moving. Option number one, seconded by Counselor Charlette. That will go to council. All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Simon, regarding short-term rentals?
Through your worship, no, we don't have anything on our end.
All right, great. So let's move on to the housekeeping things with the OCP.
Wait, I do actually have a question.
Okay, Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, like, when do we expect this all to be done? Not done, it's never gonna be done, but like, when do we expect to be receiving applications from people?
Through your worship, or, is Counselor Ryan, just for clarification, are you asking, when are we expecting these bylaws to be adopted? At which point people will be able to make applications in accordance with them?
Yes.
So through your worship, essentially, if we are able to bring it back in March, so let's say it comes back at the end of March, then you know, depending on when the public hearing will be able to be held, maybe sometime in April. And then, depending on whether or not third reading is granted at the public hearing, depending on the outcome, it would still have to come back for one subsequent council meeting for final adoption. So we'd potentially be looking, in my view, probably around the beginning of May for final bylaw adoption, I think is a fair estimate to say, should this be brought back for the March council meetings.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Okay, let's carry on. Thank you.
So I am going to hand it off to Ms. Wade here, who will get started with the OCP housekeeping.
All right. So before you today, we are bringing forward the OCP housekeeping proposed amendments in order to complete Phase One of the OCP update. But we'll talk about the summary of the issue, we'll do some background, we'll have a little discussion on the proposed housekeeping amendments, and talk about next steps. As you're aware, we have been engaging regarding the OCP for over a year now. And as we've been doing the engagement on the visioning and the community priorities, and surveying, and setting up the focus group, we have been going through the OCP to identify housekeeping measures in order that we can amend the OCP so that we have a solid baseline document to prevent any misinterpretations and try to be much more consistent in our interpretations till such a point that we have a completed OCP update. So here is Phase One. We've completed the vision check-in, as you're aware. And then we've done the amendments up to the housekeeping, which are before you for discussion today, so that we can discuss those proposed amendments, as well as looking at proposed engagement that we must follow under the legislation before us, under the LGA and the Community Charter. Phase Two is underway as well, with various RFPs out for the master plans. So that is underway currently, and this will be informing our policies for Phase Three, which will be our policy update. And that will provide us with all the necessary policies to inform the complete update to the OCP, which we hope to have before council in March 2022. So what are the current challenges in the OCP? Well, there's an issue regarding structure and lack of reference sections. We need to look at how it's laid out in regards to easy reading and clarity for the user, in particular external users, as well as us internally. There's references to the United Development Bylaw and the associated land use transect zones, which this was never adopted by council. So this creates confusion in interpreting the OCP, and we're recommending that we actually remove these from the OCP. There's some issues around the density table that does not align with the policies of the OCP. They, we have policies about housing densities and other bonusing, which are referred to in our policies, but the table itself does not clearly reflect that, and we'll walk through that. There's incorrect information in regards to floodplain, in regards to the DPs that we have, that we need to amend and align with the proper legislation. We need to actually look at how we're going to, what is the framework for land use? And we want to order it appropriately, so it makes logical sense, so it's easy to read and interpret. And there is some unnecessary and outdated appendices that really have no legislative effect for us. So in preparing these amendments, staff has been going through the OCP and making notes as we have been using it as to what needs to change, what, how can we improve this document, and how can we coordinate it and format it in such a way that it is easy to be used. It's been quite intensive for staff over the last year in identifying this, and how best to make this a very concise and easy, user-friendly document, and to remove the inconsistencies that are creating issues with interpretation. So we have prepared a repeal and replace document, and we are trying to ensure that there's transparency in how we're moving forward with this. You will have, there's a comprehensive how-to use the tractor, that's in your report. And there's an annotated version of the current OCP to comply with the tracker, so that you will see where all the changes are gonna be made in the OCP, our proposed changes. So really, the general amendments are to do with the format and the structure, and to increase accessibility of the information, so you can find it quickly and directly. And so renumbering, formatting, spelling punctuation, references to legislation, taking out outdated information, and updating cross-references. As you are aware, we have gone through the process over the last year, just over a year, as to update the vision and priorities, engage with the community. And council has endorsed the vision and priorities, and as part of this housekeeping amendment, we are proposing to amend with the current, the endorsed vision and priorities as part of those amendments. At this point, now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Simon to take you through the rest of the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. So we're gonna go through this very high level. Obviously, if you go through the OCP Amendment Tracker and the corresponding annotated version of the OCP, you will see there's upwards of 80 or 90 amendments that are thrown in there. Some of them very minor, and some of them a little bit more substantial. So we want to take you through some of the more substantial ones. One of the first ones that we're gonna go through right now is the density table that is currently in the official community plan, Table Three in the OCP, and that density table does help guide applicants when they are going through a rezoning or OCP amendment process. Staff are proposing some pretty, on the surface, substantial changes, so we want to be able to unpack this for you to justify why staff are proposing going in the direction that we are. But before getting into the details of the density table, we need to first understand the history of how we got to where we are now, and it dates back 12, 13 years. So just very briefly, kind of starting at the beginning. In July 2008, the current version of our density table, the key to understand here is it caps maximum density at 60 units per hectare. That's what was in the previous official community plan, being bylaw 1519. In September 2008, there were some substantial amendments that were brought forth by the Development Services Department to update text within the OCP to allow for density bonusing that had a maximum density of between 150 and 200 units per hectare. This was proposed and ultimately adopted through amending bylaw 1916. And the key thing to remember here is that when this density table was updated, it was updated in the previous OCP, being bylaw 1519. Fast forward to July 2009, staff had repealed that OCP, being bylaw 1519, and adopted bylaw 1950, which is the current OCP. However, when this bylaw was adopted, bylaw 1950, again, the current OCP, it included the table that was all the way back from July 2008, that did not have those amendments to reflect the maximum density that would be permitted for the bonus densities that would be 150 to 200 units per hectare. While it didn't have that table in there, it still kept the corresponding text. So when you read through the OCP right now, there's references that say, someone may get maximum bonus density as set out in column A of density table number three. And then when you go to density table number three, there is no column A or column B. In May 2012, there was another significant amendment that was done to that land use section, section which contains the density table. It made some sweeping amendments in there, mainly introducing secondary plans as well as the transect land uses. However, it did not change the density table, and those references to the density bonusing still remained. Fast forward to today, with the housekeeping amendments, we are looking to correct this historic issue. We will, we are proposing a density table that is very comparable with as it was originally identified back in September 2008. And we'll get to that on the next slide here, but it should be also made aware for council that, while this is to correct, you know, historical challenges with it, moving forward in 2021 and 2022, this will be a really key component of public engagement is working with the community to see what high density means to them. Where do we want density? Where do we not want density? So that's, it's important to understand that that will be part of comprehensive stakeholder engagement into the future to have further refinements to these. So as we get into this, to make it a little bit more simple, because we do understand that it is a lot to unpack, and for staff kind of delving into the history, it was also a lot to unpack. To make it simple, what you see outlined in red here is reflective of what the current density table is. So you can see it caps it at a maximum of 60 units per hectare. This is a big challenge when we have developments that are coming in that are much higher density than this, and all best practices would really reflect 60 units per hectare, not to constitute high density. It's really more of a medium-density provision, but that's what we're currently working with. And it's very, very important that we look at refining this, because any further amending bylaws that come forth for council, whether that be a rezoning bylaw, comprehensive development zones, they need to be in line with the OCP. So if someone comes in and they're proposing something that's higher than 60 units per hectare, it does pose a challenge. Now, what we're proposing and adding, again, it's reflective of what was previously in that amending bylaw in 2008, is these two columns for maximum bonus density, A, maximum bonus density, B, where high density with those bonuses would get us up to 60 units to 150 units, or 60 units to 200 units. And again, this is reflective of what was previously in the OCP, before it was ultimately taken out. So what you have before you is the density table that staff would be proposing to replace into the OCP. And again, on the surface, it does appear that it is a substantial change. However, it is to align with the current text in the OCP that allows for density bonusing and certain, with certain parameters around it, and to correct a historic challenge with the OCP, given that this density table was not updated with that original amending bylaw in 1950. So the next one that we're gonna go through is the references throughout the OCP to Unified Development Bylaw, as well as the transect land uses. So between 2012 and 2013, items were brought forward to council to both propose a new Unified Development Bylaw, as well as amend what are currently all the T-zones in the OCP as these transect land uses. Unified Development Bylaw sought to merge zoning, subdivision and servicing, the building bylaw, as well as the sign bylaw into one. Without really getting into the weeds on the challenges associated with that, it was ultimately determined at the time to be overly complex, and it was never adopted. However, the corresponding framework to guide the Unified Development Bylaw is these transect land use zones. That was embedded into the OCP, and it has remained ever since. So what we're left with is a guiding land use vision, being these transect zones that doesn't have that implementation vehicle, which would have been the Unified Development Bylaw. So to clean this up, staff are proposing to remove any references to the transect land use zones, clean up and structure the land use sections in the OCP a little bit more, as well as remove any reference to the Unified Development Bylaw. So one of the other items that on a day-to-day basis, staff and applicants have challenges with is with respect to development within all of our development permit areas. Currently, the OCP structures that all works within a development permit area require a permit. This creates challenges with interpretation for both staff and applicants as to what works constitutes. So the term "works", when you just say all works require a DP, what does that ultimately constitute? Because there's no corresponding definition. So staff are proposing to change this to, from works to construction activities, and include a definition, so that there's clarity. And we're also proposing to significantly expand the exemptions that are currently applicable within development permit areas. So right now, the OCP is structured to say, within every single development permit area, the only exemptions to getting a development permit are interior renovations, replacement of materials, or repainting of the same liking kind, or addition of rooftop equipment not visible from the street. You can imagine the questions that staff get and the questions that applicants have when they say, "I'm downtown, I want to replace some of my windows, do I need a development permit?" It causes these challenges with interpretation and implementation that ultimately can delay an approval process and create more work for staff. that ultimately can delay an approval process and create more work for staff and applicants. So instead of having blanket exemptions that are applicable to every DP area, staff proposed not only expanding that list, but embedding it within each individual development permit area to give specific guidance within that area as to what does and what does not require a development permit. So one of the other items that Ms. Wade had touched upon is floodplain exemptions. Again, without going so much into the details on it, currently floodplains are identified as a development permit area. Under the Local Government Act, floodplain development is intended to be regulated separate from development permit areas. Staff proposed removing the floodplain area from a development permit area and including additional regulations to guide development within the floodplain. We have many properties that are existing developments in there or existing subdivisions in there where people are coming in to build. And to make it very, very simple, what staff are doing is taking it out of the DP area. We have the regulations regarding development within the floodplain. So the elevation you need to be at or the setback that you need to meet from a water body, any application that's in line with these regulations can proceed. They don't have to worry about development permits. They don't have to worry about anything else. Any application that is not in line with these floodplain regulations would now need to apply for what's called a floodplain exemption permit. This is the proper process under the legislation. They would have to have a qualified professional, like a, a geoscientist, ultimately provide a report with recommendations saying how you mitigate the impacts of developing the floodplain area. We would register that on title and we would see this as a delegated technical permit that the Director of Development Services would be able to sign off on. And it would help expedite these developments and clarify what people can and cannot do within the floodplains. Some of the
Before we go on, Mr. Simon, Councilor Ryan does a question. And then I just want to circle back to the floodplain.
Yeah, what do other communities do about floodplain, floodplanes? Do they do this where you don't need to have a development permit and they just have, they set the regulations and yeah?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. Revelstoke is the only municipality that we are able to come across that regulates it via development permits, which again is not in line with how the legislation requires regulating development within the floodplain. The legislation is very specific about developing in the floodplain. And even the, the sections of the Local Government Act that govern floodplain development are completely separate from the sections that govern development permit areas. So what we are doing here is not only being in line with other practices for most municipalities, it's also bringing it in line with the legislative requirements. And it reduces ambiguity for staff and applicants.
Okay, is, does anything, maybe this is a real dumb question, but like, does this have to do at all with the dam and the fact that we're like, that the, I don't know, like the risk is higher here that there might actually be a flood?
Not through your worship, no. BC is quite specific throughout that floodplain mapping is a, is a key parameter for municipalities to be aware of and to guide development applications within those floodplain areas. It doesn't have to do with the dam.
Okay, and then I have another question about, yeah, so the development permit areas thing, it makes me a little bit nervous and I, I'm hoping that I just don't understand it. I guess when I see like these lists of things that would be exempt from requiring a development permit, the first thing I think is that, you know, like it's going to, we're going to see crazy amounts of development happening really quickly because it seems like there's other communities in BC that I can think of who have like cleaned up their own city and maybe had adjustments done to the development permit areas as well. And those communities, and maybe it's totally unrelated, but they seem to just be like exploding overnight seemingly. Once there's kind of less of a barrier and I, I think it's good. And obviously, all of us on council want there to be, you know, less of a barrier for someone to build because we have a housing shortage. But I'm just curious, like things like subdivision and lot consolidation, like, if that doesn't go to a development permit, then what is the process?
So through your worship, the subdivision, lot consolidation, road widening, that's something that staff are going to be evaluating a little bit more. But essentially, under the Local Government Act, any subdivision requires an issued development permit. But we have instances where people are subdividing and don't know exactly what they're going to build. They don't know the form and character of it. So those development permits within guide things like the streetscape. And that's something that staff need to reconcile whether or not that's going to be pursued with these housekeeping amendments or whether or not we're going to look at that as part of the comprehensive review. I know, I know it's, it's a lot to unpack, but it's, it has to do with how the legislation governs a development permit requirements for subdivisions.
Sorry, I still don't understand. So what, like if somebody wants to subdivide and under this new OCP, it doesn't require a development permit, then who is it going to?
Through your worship, any subdivision application currently would be approved by the city's approving officer.
Okay, so all of these things that are now potentially going to be not coming to council would be by the approving officer, which is right now Marianne, right?
Through your worship, that is correct. And that's just for subdivisions. And I know it, it seems like a long list on the surface. A lot of these are items, so for instance, outdoor patios. That's not something that currently requires a development permit. Staff aren't requiring that, but including it in here, again, it reduces any ambiguity and it provides that clarity for staff, for applicants and into the future so that the question doesn't even arise about whether or not it requires one.
Because it wouldn't require it.
Exactly. But right now, if someone came in and they said, I want to apply for an outdoor patio and they say, well, you're within a development permit area, all works in a development permit area require a DP. Now, this hasn't been the practice of staff, but one could interpret it to say, you do need a development permit. So this reduces the ambiguity with the interpretation by including it in a list of exemptions.
So the only time that this would be used is in a place that isn't designated as a development permit area?
No, through your worship, these are exemptions that apply to development permit areas. So if you have a business downtown and you want to, you want to develop, you fall within the downtown revitalization development permit area. This would tell you what you can do without acquiring a development permit and go right to building permit or whatever additional permits you might need to facilitate that development.
Right, and so I, I guess I'm just curious what other councillors have to say about, like some of them for sure, you know, it's no brainer, like outdoor patios and things like that and signage, of course. But like subdivision seems like quite a big, a big one. And yeah.
Through your worship, if that's something that council has concerns about. And again, that is, so one of the items with these exemptions that staff are, are still currently reviewing and analyzing is the subdivision question. That is something that we are, there's a little note in the report that also talks about receiving legal review of the OCP amendment, which is pretty typical for something of this scale. And that is one of the items that are, we are specifically addressing. So there's ways you can go around that. You might cap it on a number of lots, but it is good feedback for staff to have if that's something that council would like us to examine further.
Yeah, like personally, I don't think it's like that the trust in whatever is not in one person. Like it's not that I personally don't trust Marianne. I just feel like i- if there is an extra barrier to a developer and they think, you know, well, maybe I won't build because it has to go to council, like maybe that's not the worst thing in the world, you know? Like maybe having that public eye or like that, that little extra bit of pub- public feedback is, is, is a good thing, that's all.
Through your worship, I think just some clarification too about the general development process would help. To make it super simple, someone is proposing a ten lot subdivision. That ten lot subdivision includes multi-family developments on their duplexes, triplexes, row homes. It falls within a multi-residential development permit area. Even with these exemptions.
True, it's only form
Exactly, so they wouldn't need a development permit for the subdivision. But before we issue a building permit, they would have to get that major development permit, which would then come back to council. It, it has to do with the sequencing of when these applications are required.
Gotcha, okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
But I just, I want, sorry, sorry, your worship. I do just want to note for all of council, the subdivision is a question that, that staff may have further updates on as this progresses through the process.
Awesome, thanks.
So just, just a couple of things. I just got a note sent to me, going back to vacation rentals, the fees right now are two hundred bucks for the license fee plus fifty bucks for bedroom, just so you can put that in the back of your mind. I just want to go back to floodplains, Mr. Simon, just in dealing with that. I know that we have some, some stuff across in the Big Eddie area that is in a floodplain. So by, by dealing with these exemptions, you're actually going to be making it easier for proponents to come forward to actually deal with things because what your intention is to realign or align the development permits with the Local Government Act. And that's going to take away some of that, that red tape and make things more simplistic rather than just saying, no, it can't be done. Is that correct?
Through your worship, so we do have developments that are existing in the floodplain. This provides a more structured, streamlined, simplified process that they would need to go through that doesn't have the same ambiguity as the current process that puts them all within a development permit area and just says everything in there needs a DP. Then the question for staff, when people come in and say, I want to build a house out in Big Eddie and it's in the floodplain, do I need a development permit? It's a, it's a matter of interpretation that has occurred over the years here. This eliminates that and would basically tell someone if you are in line with the regulations, you do not need a permit. If you are not in line with the regulations, then you need an exemption. And that exemption needs to be based purely on technical expertise.
Perfect, absolutely. Thank you for that. That clarification is, is wonderful because that, that makes it simplistic. And that's kind of what we were, what we're talking about trying to do is get out of our own way so that people can see exactly what they can or not, can or cannot do and giving them a definitive answer. Thank you, appreciate that. Any further questions? Otherwise, Mr. Simon, I'll ask you to move on.
I, I have a, just a quick one.
Counselor Ryan.
Is, does the Development Services Department have an idea of roughly what percentage of people come to the department asking for things like, you know, a permit to develop in a floodplain, for example, and then are given a response and then they're kind of like, ah, never mind. Like I know that's a hard number and I'm not expecting it to be even close to accurate, but like just estimated. Because I'm curious, you know, like what is that barrier?
Through your worship, it is, it is obviously very challenging to put a number to that. I can express from my own experience, being here for just over a year, I have dealt with the question of developing in the floodplain dozens of times. I have heard conflicting answers about how it has been managed. And this will eliminate any ambiguity and that's the whole intent. And in addition to that, weekly basis that we hear questions about whether or not a certain development form requires a, a development permit as well. So this will hopefully provide that, an abundant and excess amount of clarity to applicants so that they can read and understand themselves and also for staff to provide consistent responses. The whole idea is that you craft these regulations so that if we review them now and implement them or if someone completely different reviewed them and implemented them tomorrow, that the outcome would be the same.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Mr. Simon, let's move on. Thank you.
So just really briefly with the mapping. Again, this is much more reflective of standard housekeeping amendments, Schedule F being the land use map, Schedule G being the development permit area map. It would be updated to reflect the most recent amending bylaws that occurred. And again, the legend would be updated to remove the references to transect land uses. There's two appendices that as part of these housekeeping amendments, number one, to help shorten the length of the document, but also remove unnecessary information that doesn't really have a binding effect on it, being Appendix Six and Appendix Seven. Appendix Six is a smart growth checklist that was brought in back in twenty twelve with the amending by law to implement the transect land uses. Throughout the OCP, there's language that references this smart growth checklist, but makes it very clear that it is not a specific requirement and that it doesn't have any binding effect. To the best of our knowledge, it has not been implemented. And the policy references that are contained therein are, are not strong enough to guide and influence rezoning applications. So in removing this, staff propose within the land use areas, so when we get rezoning and OCP amendment applications, we have some strict policies that require people to take a conservation design approach, which in a nutshell means working with the natural features of the land and incorporating that into their design to retain those key environmental and natural features rather than the, the old status quo development of going in, leveling the land and ultimately building upon it. So with the removal of that checklist, it has been replaced with more simple, easy to implement policies to, in our view, achieve a very similar goal. And I would also note too that Ms. Wade, as she's been working through the OCP and guiding that process, one of the key things that's been embedded in that is this climate lens and the sustainability lens that will be applied throughout the document. So as we are working through the comprehensive OCP, there will be policies that are embedded throughout to have these outcomes that are, are more robust and have that binding effect so that staff can work with applicants and get some leverage with these policies to require a more sustainable design and development form. Now Appendix Seven, these are what are referred to as illustrative plans. These were implemented again with that twenty, twenty twelve by law amendment for the transect land uses. These are plans for large vacant parcels of land that again, don't have any legally binding effect or any, any binding effect on applications as they come forth. They're simply ideas of how the land could be developed and they were related to the implementation of the unified development by law. Given that the unified development by law was not adopted and is not being pursued, these plans are no longer relevant to guide those developments. So what staff will be relying upon is those previously mentioned policies to guide land use applications to ensure a sustainable, compact residential development form rather than these illustrative plans that again, don't have that binding effect on applications. So to, to kind of conclude, staff would be looking for direction on next steps. What we are proposing, because again, a lot of these amendments and when you go through the, the actual amended version of the OCP, a lot of them are, you know, administrative in nature. So in terms of a incredibly robust engagement process that requires open houses and display boards and months and months of engagement, that's really more suited towards the remainder of the comprehensive review. And what we'd be looking at doing is updating the city's webpage with all supporting documentation and updating our online engagement platform, social media outreach, update to the OCP focus group. We'd potentially be looking at an informational video to help guide the public towards what the intent of these amendments are. We'd be reviewing with Advisory Planning Commission, obviously as part of the LGA requirements. We have to refer this out to internal, external agencies, preparing a council report with the outcome of the engagement when it comes back for first and second reading. And we would also be available for a public hearing. On a day-to-day basis, staff are obviously available to answer any questions via phone or email. And then again, as stated, the comprehensive stakeholder engagement would be completed with part of the, the remainder of the OCP review. So Ms. Wade has, has a couple of things to add, I think, to this, but I will pass it off to her.
Yes, so I just wanted to add in one thing with the next steps in engagement. One of the things under the community charter that we are obligated to do is that staff would be bringing forward a report to council in regards to a policy on engagement for the OCP updates, requiring a council resolution on what does that engagement look like. So the discussion today will help us to form that report that will come forward to council for their consideration and for endorsement of a policy for engagement for the OCP housekeeping update amendments. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. And I'm done, your worship.
There's any questions for Ms. Wade or Mr. Simon? I think, I think what you've put forward, oh, Counselor Charlotte, you had your hand up.
Yeah, not really a question, just a comment. This is absolutely amazing, the amount of work that's gone into this is impressive. I think this will serve us well for some really strong and robust engagement going forward without all the confusion. But also allowing us to clean these things up so that staff can do their work in the meantime, which I think will Uh, which I think will speak to a lot of our community's desire for some action. Um, so just huge shout out. This looks awesome. It satisfies my soul on a geeky level, getting all this cleaned up.
A geeky level. I like that. All right. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed, uh, as to how far we've come, but also uh, you've got the roadmap as to go forward and the engagement with the community again is, uh, is very satisfying. So I think it's a, a good, uh, move moving forward. Uh, any other counselors with comments? Counsel Elliot?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, curious. Uh, the lifespan of an OCP, do, do we have, what, what, how, how long are these typically valid?
Till they're done and then they should start over and start them again. Um, having said that, normally five to 10 years, is that, uh, uh, an appropriate thing, Ms. Wade?
Yes, your worship, that is legislatively, there's, I believe in the LGA or the community charter, it says, you know, every five years we're supposed to revisit it.
So I, I think a lot of the recommendations are good. It helps us get to, uh, condenses the existing version. And I like the idea of moving it towards a simple, simple document. I think that's a very, very important one. But, uh, I know on the work plan that we talked about a couple of years ago, the zoning bylaws were probably more vital to be updated than the OCP. That was what, uh, I think the previous planner had indicated, and I'm just curious. How does this play? Are, are we moving ahead on the bylaws, uh, as well?
Yeah, we're, we're having staff work on that, but Ms. Wade, I'll, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship, through to Counsel Elliot. Yes, um, we are actually in the middle of preparing a report. Uh, that will be coming to, for discussion at committee, the whole, hopefully next month. Uh, to talk about all the housekeeping, um, amendments we want to make to the zoning bylaw. So it's coming to you very, very soon.
Yeah, that, that's great, Mary Ann. I, I, I think that was, uh, there were a lot of hangups and a lot of frustration since, you know, created through the bylaws that were in place. And I think we're, we could have, you know, we, I think that's a, a, a a direction that where we can alleviate a lot of stress on our community and a lot of, you know, uncertainty. I think that's big. Thank you.
All right. Any, uh, further comments or questions for Ms. Wade? Thank you, Ms. Wade. Mr. Simon, appreciate where we're at. I think, uh, by us uh, not showing, uh, anything other than support for, uh, for you moving forward, um, as I watch the screen morph from one to the other here. Um, I think, uh, we're supportive of what you've got going and how you're moving it forward.
Thank you, your worship.
Any, uh, resolution or anything that we need, Ms. Low with that, uh, other than, uh, being supportive of staff as they move forward? All right. Let's, uh, let's carry on. We're going to go on to, uh, by law enforcement now, I believe. Ms. Floyd, you have some comments?
Um, I don't really have any comments other than I can answer questions. The guys, I think, did a really good job at this kind of new format of the annual report where it's more forward thinking.
Okay. So as we look at this, we see an increase in calls for service and then a projected increase of substantial amount, uh, for 2021. And, uh, looking at, uh, the number of files, not only projected, but the number of files that they've done in, uh, in 2020 is, uh, is quite, quite an increase and, uh, I'm, I'm happy with what they're doing. Uh, any comments from counselors?
Yeah. Scroll down a little bit and show the rest of the report.
So it gives us a good cross-section there just with the bar graph as to, uh, as to number of calls in the categories for each, and then with the pie, uh, graph giving the neighborhoods and definitely, uh, uh, central in the downtown core seems to be the biggest thing. And that's where we have our, uh, large number of, uh, parking issues and, uh, and people downtown, so.
Your worship, I think it's also important to point out that there was 375 COVID-19 related calls for service in 2020. Just to give some indication of how busy, um, by law enforcement was with respect to COVID as well.
Yes, and that, uh, that actually worked out, you know, we see a large number of calls, but, uh, currently our by law enforcement is engage and educate. And, uh, I think they've done extremely well in that level. They seem pleased in talking to them into uh, how they've educated. And we've had some calls back from people who have said, uh, we appreciate the way our by law enforcement have engaged with us and dealing with things and educating us and whatnot. And, and usually people are phoning to, uh, give us the other side of the story. So I, I'm just appreciative of that. And then, so when we look at the, uh, the animal license or the dog licenses, uh, we're usually up significant numbers and we're down just to 53 annual and, uh, and lifetime dog licenses, um. Any attribution to that, uh, other than people just don't want to license their animal?
Um, well, I think since 2016, we've kind of got more lifetime, um, licenses sold, which reduces obviously the annual ones. But it's, we're putting a push right now on because in 2020, we only sold 20 annual licenses. So definitely there are a lot of dogs out there that need to be licensed.
Right. They need to have that, uh, little plate hanging under their, uh, under their chin, so.
Exactly, yeah. So we're going to work on an educational campaign. So the by law officers will be out there looking and, and informing people that they should have their dogs licensed.
All right, great. Uh, any further comments or statements, Ms. Floyd, from you? And then, uh, counselors, any questions?
Um, no, not for me, other than, um, if we go back to page two where the calls for service outcomes is, um, the guys highlighted that of the, um, calls that they received in 2020, there were 1,146 that were gone on arrival. So with only two officers on and with COVID, quite often they would go and they would either see no infraction or if it was a vehicle parked, it would be gone by that time and they couldn't actually follow up on it. Which was a significant amount in the overall calls.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Counsel Elliot, did you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, we, uh, left seven, uh, animal control, the, the chicken coop and the, uh, farm animals that, uh, are, um, at large on, on a person's property. What, what are we thinking on that? Do we just, we just left it till the end of, do we give it a timeframe when, when we would get back to it?
Okay, I guess that's up to council. Uh, you'd passed that, uh, thing that Counsel Ryan had brought forward about just stopping, uh, enforcement and dealing with some of those things and, uh, and that was, uh, that was done. And, uh, so at this point, if you feel you want to revisit it, I know I've got phone calls from people who have neighbors who have animals. And they would love for us to, uh, get back at it and to, uh, to deal with it and look at it in a, in a wholesome way. Um, I'm not sure what's happening as far as, um, numbers of chickens. We had the ability to have five chickens in, on a property and, uh, and when we stopped everything, we asked people not to increase the number of chickens. I know in some properties, they have increased the number of chickens. Um, I've got a complaint from one lady who's, uh, got an increase of rodents in her neighborhood because of the increase in animals uh, on the property next to her. So if that's something that council feels that you want to revisit, then we can, uh, we can have a look at that. We can have that discussion and, uh, and, uh, so I would probably talk to the by law enforcement officers, get a little bit more of a report and then, um, uh, bring something forward for council if you want to amend that or look at that and see where we move from here.
Oh, no, I just thought that that was the direction we were going. We were going to get some recommendations from the bylaws, what, or, or how we were going to approach it. Uh, I think it was left that we weren't going to collect from the, uh, the guys that were ticketed until there was more certainty what we were going in the future.
Okay, so I'll go back to by law. We're not going to deal with that, uh, that today as far as a report.
No, no.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think that's good. And then, uh, and then, uh, probably next week, you and I, Counsel Elliot, can have a, uh, conversation about one of those. So one of the things that you wanted to talk about, and we'll talk about that and see how we can move things forward, so. Awesome. All right. Uh, anything further regarding by law enforcement? Okay, let's, uh, move on to, uh, to the fire department, fourth quarter report. Um, Chief De Rossi, you're here. Would you like to, uh, start and, uh, and fill us in?
Thank you, your worship. The fourth quarter report for 2020, um, as you can see from the previous numbers, is running right around average for the number of calls. I do believe however the number of fires was up, uh, particularly for residential structure fires. Hundred and twenty-three calls in that quarter. Um, that's pretty average, uh, fifty to forty there you can see is uh, fairly steady, so that's good. Uh, it's not, meaning, meaning it's not increasing dramatically. Um, so I'm sure that if we look at the numbers next year compared to 2019 and 2020, the, uh, COVID-related incidents and related items would, would, uh, we'd be able to have a better perspective on that. The, um, Office of the Fire Commissioner has noted since the beginning of 2020, uh, residential and multifamily residential fires were up, and you've seen a number of those in the news with the apartment fires and that. So we're watching that carefully. So we go to fire prevention. Our, uh, Fire and Life Safety Educator, uh, Roger Eklund has done an excellent job. He's managed to keep up his, uh, his fire inspections, as you can see, they're fairly regularly in the last three months. Follow-up inspections, uh, typically average. Don't have a total number there, but we can see it's right around, uh, about a hundred. Uh, inspections in the quarter, so that's roughly one a day. Right around ninety for thirty days in a month, I think. Hundred and three is the exact number. Um, investigation and losses, there were eight reportable fires in the fourth quarter. Uh, everyone is aware of the fatal fire that we had, uh, in October there. As well as a couple of other structure fires that occurred in the following months. And for training, it's, uh, it's been a busy quarter. Uh, the crews were very happy to have some uh, more consistent guidance from our provincial health officer and the Fire Chiefs Association of B.C. Along with the, uh, B.C. Fire Training Officers Association. So we're able to, um, keep the crews busy with their training. There was a lot of remote learning done using, um, online as well as, uh, uh, we call those prepackaged, uh, educational um, classes that they could do individually. So there were some classes that we had, uh, sent out to the, to the crews and they did those on their uh, at home during their practice, practice hours. So they did get credits for those, so those are listed in there. Uh, a couple of nice pictures there. So always enjoy seeing the, the crew hard at work. And for the community, um, I asked to, uh, have this become an annual Santa run. It was very, very popular with the community, so I'm very happy with that. It was, uh, uh, quite a, quite a fun time riding in the fire truck with Santa, and we had some people that were absolutely thrilled to, uh, have the ability to ride along in the fire truck with Santa on Facebook, so that was awesome. Most of the events that, uh, the Rev, Rev Fire Rescue, uh, sponsored in 2020 were either modified or canceled, so there are very few public events that were done. And, um, we've gotten, again, better guidance from the provincial health officer, uh, particularly on what we call drive-through events. So that is, uh, one that's coming up is the, uh, muscular dystrophy and burn fund. Uh, the fire crews are going to be out on the family day weekend doing some fundraising, uh, handing out the boots or holding out the boots, hoping people will donate a bit of cash, and they're looking at how they can do some digital online, uh, fund collections for the next, next opportunity. Firefighter health and safety, we did have, uh, the fatal fire, so there was, uh, critical incident stress. Uh, events were held on that. I'm happy to say that the outcome of, result of that uh, incident stress management has been, uh, very effective. So we're not, uh, not seeing any, uh, trauma, uh, coming out of those that would not be expected. I think that is the last page there. And so I'll take any questions, counsel has.
Great. Uh, so I just want to make, make a couple of comments, uh, Chief De Rossi. Uh, first of all, uh, the Santa run, what an incredible experience. Uh, for those of us who were able to follow along and actually stand out on the street as the fire department went by, uh, it was a pretty uplifting event. So thank you and to your crew for everyone doing that and for allowing Santa to, to be with you as, as you cruise through town. Much appreciated. Uh, dealing, uh, with the health and safety, of course, um, because in my other capacity, I'm at these scenes and I get to see firsthand what, uh, what your firefighters experience and, uh, and for the most part, I hate to see them see what I have to see, but, uh, the way that you dealt with it, not only on the scene with your firemen, uh, and all of your staff, but, uh, in the debriefing afterwards. So kudos to you. Thank you for that and for making sure that uh, all of your staff are taken care of. Very much appreciative. And this morning to, uh, be on scene, uh, with your crews at, uh, at RCEC yet again, uh, at minus eighteen degrees and to see them work so quickly and diligently to knock that down and to, uh, to basically, uh, save our, uh, our building and, uh, and our organization down there. Much appreciative. I know it's a lot of work and as we spoke, uh, it's a lot of work to go back and clean everything up, uh, especially when things are frozen. But I just want to, uh, uh, say thank you to you and, uh, and to your crew. And a good turnout of the crew this morning, almost everybody out there. Uh, an amazing thing at minus eighteen. So again, I just want to say kudos to you. Thank you again and for all you do. Counselors, any comments or questions for Chief De Rossi? Nope. Seeing none? Again, uh, thank you, chief. Much appreciated. All right, uh, we're going to move on to, uh, RCMP. And, uh, uh, do we have Sergeant Dodds here with us now at this point?
I am here, your worship.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant. Appreciate you, uh, being here and, uh, so we'll, uh, we'll hear your reports and, uh, go forward. Thank you.
Okay, uh, good afternoon, uh, your worship and council. Uh, Sergeant Chris Dodds here on behalf of the RCMP today. Um, it's, uh, I know it's noted in the agenda, it's the fourth quarter, uh, re, uh, stats, but, um, uh, since it's the fourth quarter for, uh, we put together the year-end stats, uh, to give an update to council. Uh, uh, where we sat for the year. So I'll, uh, I'll move through it. So total calls for service, uh, uh, this year in, uh, in the municipality, five hundred and ninety-six. Um, that, sorry, these are persons' calls. I'll get to the total calls, uh, at the end there. Persons' calls, five ninety-six. We're s- You'll see, um, in the percent change, uh, we're, we're generally down in calls across the board. Um, except for a few, uh, little spikes, uh, here and there. Um, but generally we're down across the board in calls, uh, and it's likely attributed to, um, uh, COVID-19 and the, uh, the, um, downturn in, uh, in our tourism. Uh, people, uh, public coming to, uh, to the town. So, um, anyways, so we'll move on. We're down, uh, down in persons' calls uh, by about seven percent. Our mental health calls for service, down thirty-three percent. Uh, missing persons and SAR calls, uh, significant number down, uh, seventy-eight percent. Um, robbery, an insignificant number, but down fifty percent. And, um, moving down through the numbers, I won't go- And moving down through the numbers, I won't go through every one, but just I wanted to highlight the one at the bottom, the Quarantine Act. That's that includes also the the COVID nineteen related Measures Act and subsequently that's replaced that is the Provincial Emergency Program Act. Luckily, we've been extremely lucky not to have an overrun of COVID nineteen calls. Clearly, by bylaws report previous to this. They've been dealing with the lion's share of the calls, which we we are very appreciative of for sure from a police perspective. So we've been we've been lucky to get away with relatively small amount of COVID nineteen Quarantine Act calls for service. And we've issued very few tickets in violation tickets in that respect. We also are educating and and engaging people. And that seemed to have been very effective to the to date so far. Moving on to the next slide. Property property crime calls within the municipality were up a little a little bit. Obviously, the rest, for the most part, were down. Other property that just are other miscellaneous calls that don't fit in those top four boxes there. We have seen a little bump in that, but nothing too significant there in terms of the numbers. Next slide. What we have seen significant decrease is Liquor Act calls for service. That is because the liquor establishments, of course, are not having the same hours as they normally would. And we so we've seen a significant drop in our calls for service there. Which has also translated over to our where you'll see later, but a drop in our our lodged prisoners or people arrested and lodged in our cell block overnight. Which generally speaking are intoxicated people that can't take care of themselves. So we find a home for them for the night and make sure they get home safe the next day. So that's where we've seen a definite decrease, which is for us is a bit of a nice change, but we know we'll we'll see that again soon, probably next year or this fall. Our bylaw tickets are down quite significantly as well, and that's likely due to our our lack of of, you know, people coming into town. But I see that bylaws is also trucking along with tickets on their side. So next slide. I put this up. I I wanted to make sure that council was had a good snapshot of our traffic enforcement and situations calls for service. So I I I also concluded the provincial numbers here just to see the differences. So interestingly enough, and I think it's kind of well, not really strange, but interesting that we we have seen an uptick in total collisions, both in the municipality and the prevent the provincial highway. Even though we've had a reduction in the you know, the the traffic volume, I would say. So that's interesting. Not exactly sure why. Collisions are down, no injury collisions are down, which is a good thing. Fatal collisions. Well, there's been none within the municipality, but we are up one one in terms of the provincial area. And impaired driving, we're about very similar in terms of those numbers slightly down this year and likely due to the traffic volume. Moving on. Okay, so so just here's our where we kind of get in the meat and potatoes of the work we do here. The totals. So total calls for service for two thousand twenty, we had forty-one sixty versus two thousand nineteen forty-four oh five. So we are down about six percent in calls for service. Municipal calls for service down eight percent and provincial calls for service down one percent there. And these are again averages in the percentage column there. Prisoners lodged down forty percent in in guests at our lodge here. And also interestingly enough, but we're down a little bit on our calls, our telephone calls at the office. Our front counter calls are down. Our police information checks are down because of a lot of the volunteer services around have closed shop or, you know, slowed down their their recruiting. And also with people coming in for work, say at the ski hill or whatever, we we're not seeing as many police information checks, criminal record checks. Transcription hours are slightly up. That just depends on what we're working on. And obviously liquor licenses are significantly down eighty-four percent because no one's having weddings, no one's having special events where we're approving liquor licenses. Calls for service with SAR, again, they're, you know, significantly, not significantly, you look at the numbers, the numbers are very small. So the percentages are are high when there's a change, but thirty-one over thirty-seven last year. Moving on there. So I just want to reiterate our our twenty twenty annual performance planning initiatives and things we were working towards within the detachment for twenty twenty. We set these goals every spring, and that's what I'm in the process of doing now for setting our annual, our twenty twenty-one. Our fiscal year goals for the R C M P, which starts April first. We'll we'll set those priorities for the year and but to set those, we will, I'll be reaching out to the city. The regional district, our partners in the community to set our goals for the upcoming year where they would like to see our policing efforts. You know, our proactive policing efforts pushed towards. And we look at our stats, we 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 make a decision on where we're going to, where our priorities will lie outside of our calls for service. And these these particular five were again established with contact with our partners. So impaired driving, prevention enforcement and reduction. We're going to obviously continue that. That's a mainstay in our annual performance planning, generally speaking. It's likely going to stay on our plan for this twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. The traffic safety, speed prevention and enforcement, we're going to continue with that. Domestic violence reduction, obviously important. Theft of snowmobiles. We have seen a reduction in that this year, obviously, due to the reduction in our visits to to the area by out-of-towners. Generally speaking, we do have a bit of an issue with snowmobiles being stolen in the winter. And but we so luckily, we haven't had to respond to those calls as much this year, but it will it will likely be something on the on the deck for next year. And sexual assault awareness and prevention and reduction, that is generally often can occur within the liquor establishments. And we what my goal is there is to work closer with our partners, our liquor establishments here and nightclubs, bars, pubs, etc. To and with the city and whoever might else want to join in. Is to just do some promotion in that area to reduce the 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 risk and create awareness of 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 the of issues that can come up in in the nightlife. So those are the five. They'll likely transfer over to next year. But we will see after we do our our consultation period with all our stakeholders. Quickly, we have, you know, currently thirteen out of sixteen staff member or police officers working. We have we do have some people off on long long-term O D S or long-term sickness, etc. And but other than that, our our staffing is looking relatively good for the future. Aside from that, I think that is pretty much my report, your worship. I'll take free to take any questions, etc.
Great. Thank you, Sergeant Dodds. Appreciate that. Appreciate what your staff's doing in the community, even though the numbers are down slightly, we still see them out and about doing what they need to do. And I get to have regular conversations with them as they're out doing their job and appreciate significant numbers of them going out of their way to engage with the community. And I also know we've got a few new people in in the community and they seem happy to be here. So it's it's a great win for us here in Revelstoke. So, councilors, any questions or comments for Sergeant Dodds? Seeing none? Oh, Council Elliot, go ahead.
Just curious, look, the number of calls, are we say our base population is ten thousand. Are we on in line in in terms of number of callouts for population that size? Or I'm just trying to figure if we're a safe city.
Yeah. Well, I've worked in, I mean, this is my seventh posting in the R C M P over almost nineteen years of service or just around nineteen years of service. That's a tough question.
Oh, sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to.
But, you know, in terms of violent crime or, you know, certainly, we don't see the same types of things we do in in in, say, other places where where the populations are larger. I it it's 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 very hard to compare apples to oranges in this respect, but you know, I I'm very happy with our with where our numbers are. And with population, you you do see a growth in calls for service, but you know, and and we do apply policing where 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 policing needs to be applied if we see spikes in certain places such as theft of snowmobiles or, you know, so it's it's a tough question to answer. But certainly, we don't face some of the challenges others other cities and towns, villages face in our in in relatively close proximity to where we are.
We don't really have a rampant drug trade or problem in our community, which is great. And I or do you see it?
Uh, Councilor Elliot, through your worship. Well, you know, I'm I'm, you know, there's always going to be like a a a drug trade and a and a and a you know, a cross section of the society that are interested in either, you know, are are addicted to drugs or interested in recreational drugs. And as a resort town, you're you will see some of that. But, you know, we we're always working towards reducing drug activity anywhere we're working. And that's it's still a priority for us. And anytime it crops up, we're going to be on top of it.
I I guess I just pick drugs because it typically leads into the violent violent crimes and and we're lucky that we don't have a lot. So it's good. We're in a good place, I guess.
Counselor Charlotte, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just looking at some of these, the numbers, especially with today being the Moosehide campaign. I'm just mindful of the impact the pandemics having on our community. And there's been a lot of conversations around those supports for people in town. I'm interesting. I'm interested to see that the well the well-being checks are up nine percent. That seems to cover a few different topics.
Yeah, that that's a mix of numbers there. So I we're up very slightly nine percent, but that's abandoned nine-one-ones. I could get a better number like like that for check wellbeings, but I don't, let me just see here if I do.
Yeah, because there is the Mental Health Act as a separate line, which is down.
Yeah.
Similar to the other numbers, but then that I'm wondering what the difference is between a mental health act call and a well-being check call.
Yeah, well, I can explain that. Yeah. So how a check well-being is if it's just a call for service where someone wants us to check on somebody. It doesn't have to be mental health related. So the Mental Health Act numbers you see there down by thirty-three percent are numbers where we can relate that call to mental health. And otherwise, the check well-being, it could be an elderly person that has no local supports, their family have called us to go check and then we'll go check. So those that would be classified as a check well-being. That could also include children, you know, like, you know, calls for service where, you know, someone has called about a a MCFD complaint, like a Mr. Children family complaint where we're we're checking on a child to make sure of their well-being. So. Yeah.
Yeah, complicated. It's just it's an interesting thing to reflect on right now.
Yeah. And and to be perfectly honest, through your worship, I I I I am surprised that we haven't seen more mental health calls, but it's possible that just because where we live and the recreational opportunities that people have maybe assisting. Also, maybe there is some, you know, good supports in 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 town where where, you know, you know, I'm only speculating, but we haven't seen the mental health calls that 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 I I, you know, thought we may see.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Well, again, Chris, thank you for your report, but also for your staff for what you're doing and you know, the the front lines, what they're doing. And and so, Council Elliot, I just want to mention here in the province of B C, we do have an opioid crisis going on in conjunction with with COVID nineteen. We have seen our fair share here in the community right now. We're 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 fine. And but every once in a while, because of COVID nineteen, some of the stuff that gets on the street is deadly. And so as much as we are a small community and a safe community, I don't want us to ever kid ourselves that we don't have those issues here. And it's because of the fine work that our R C M P are doing, kind of tries to keep people safe and at least advise them of the issues. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Oh, Gary, I I'm sorry, your worship, I yeah, I'm not denying there that problems exist. I just think I swear we're fortunate that we don't have a lot of crime associated with it right now.
Yeah, you absolutely agree. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Sergeant Darts. Appreciate the report and all that your staff's doing.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Parks, Rock and Culture Quarterly Report. Ms. Donato, are you here? Yes, you are. Okay, Ms. Donato, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Whoops. Sorry about that. Thank you, your worship. So during the fourth quarter, COVID continued to impact our operation, but through some enhanced protocols, we were able to remain open. In the community center, we focused on youth programming and seniors programming, which were very well attended. In September, the arena facility opened, so we had the ice users come back to the facility. And to this day, minor hockey and figure skating are still actively practicing skills and drills. The aquatic center opened as well in October, and we were able to add some specific programming geared towards parent and tot, a senior swim, lap swimming and some swim lessons. In November, we expanded those offerings to just offer more of the same thing on different days. And a lot of that was well attended. We did see a slight decline decline between November and December. And it was directly correlated with the COVID outbreaks that we had in the community at that time. So we did see our numbers declined as COVID increased in the community. And now we're back to status quo. So all in all, it was a good final quarter where things were back and So all in all, it was a good final quarter where things were back in operations. We got a lot of people to the facility following the protocols. Uh, it worked out really well. So I'd be happy to take any questions. Oh, your worship, I think you're on mute.
Touche. Thank you. If I, if I've got it down, uh, everybody can hear me breathing because I'm an old man. But anyway, uh, we know that, uh, that the grizzlies have packed up, uh, recently. I know that, uh, we're into the new quarter and that's not the last quarter, but just as we move forward, um, do we still have ice in the arena and still being used by other, uh, other people? Um.
Uh, through your worship, yes, the ice is still in the arena. So minor hockey and figure skating are both actively practicing and booking as much ice time as they can. I've also reached out to the school district and just, um, invited the schools back into the facility. Logistically, we had some challenges with getting them back in the facility just based on how the other users were using the facility. But now with the grizzlies out and minor hockey, um, kind of their schedule is a bit fluid. We have more opportunity to get the school grades back into the facility for some skating. So we've extended the invitation to them to join into the facility. So they're looking at their schedule and most likely will be using the ice during the day as well. So we still have some usage there. The intent is to keep the ice until about March, between March 11th and March 18th. At that time, both of the user groups will be wrapping up their season. So we can, we can end the season a bit earlier than normal.
Great. All right. Thank you for that. Um, and then of course, uh, I will be speaking to Mr. Marchand later today to see if we have any update as to what we're doing with heat with from RCEC and that sort of thing. But you've had to shut the aquatic center down, uh, because of that issue today. And, uh, we don't know what the prognosis is going to be moving forward. So. Uh, any questions from Mr. Nato on her, uh, fourth quarter report? Seeing, uh, councillor Elliot, did you have a question? You raised your glasses up. I knew you were, didn't know whether that was a flag that you had a question. So anyway. Thanks, Mr. Nato. Appreciate what you're doing down there in your department and, uh, making sure that, uh, the things that can go on are COVID safe and, uh, appreciate all that you're doing. I know there's a lot on your shoulders, but appreciate what you and your staff are doing. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, council, that, uh, is basically our day today. Um, after the recording is over, I would just like you to stay on just for a moment. I have a couple of things that I want to say. Uh, but also I need someone to, uh, terminate the meeting. Moved by councillor Brooks Hill, seconded by councillor Charlotte. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. And the meeting is now terminated.